All right. Good evening, everybody. It is 7:06. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. I would like to first invite Tommy Hagan up from Lafayette High School, who's going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If you could all please stand and turn it to Tommy.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Tommy. All right. Welcome to the Rockwood Board of Education meeting. We would like to thank the administrative team and all the staff and students at Lafayette High School for being gracious hosts for our meeting this evening. Thank you also to the ambassadors who are here from schools in the Lafayette quadrant to assist with greeting and signing in our guests. The purpose of this meeting is to conduct some necessary business of the district and then move on to the main focus for tonight, our awards ceremony, where we will honor over 100 of our outstanding students and celebrate their accomplishments. This Board of Education meeting is livestreamed for the community's convenience. Thank you once again for being our guests this evening. Could I please have a motion to approve the agenda?
Don't move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes. Could I please have a motion to approve Board of Education meeting minutes for February 17, 2022?
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on that? All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes. Next, could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items as submitted?
Don't move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Madam President, I'd like to remove 5.09 from the consent agenda items table to another date.
All right. Any other discussion?
Second.
Okay, so the motion is to approve the consent agenda items as submitted. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And that passes. And one more. Could I have a motion to approve that the Board of Education proclaim the week of March 6 through 12, 2022, as Rockwood School Board Recognition Week?
Don't move.
Second.
Motion and a second. And Dr. Ricker, I'm turning it to you.
Thank you. Missourians benefit every day from the dedicated energies and countless hours devoted by a group of men and women from communities across the state. The public servants are elected by local constituents and do not receive compensation for their tireless efforts. They are local school board members. During the week of March 6 through 12, communities across the state, including Rockwood, will honor the dedicated service of their local school board members during School Board Recognition Week as proclaimed by Governor Michael L. Parson. All Missouri citizens are asked to recognize the important contributions of these men and women and focus attention on the vital role these public officials play in the education of Missouri's children. I will now read Governor Parson's proclamation recognizing School Board Recognition Week. This is State of Missouri Governor's proclamation. Whereas a system of quality public education is essential to the future of our state and nation, and whereas the people of Missouri have a long tradition of support for public education and their local school districts, and whereas local school boards are the ultimate expression of the unique American institution of representative governance of public school districts, and whereas local school boards, acting on behalf of and in close connection with the people of their communities, chart the direction of education in their communities, and whereas local school boards serve as a key community advocate for children, youth, and public schools. Now, therefore, I, Michael L. Parsons, Governor of the State of Missouri, do hereby proclaim March 6 through 12, 2022, to be School Board Recognition Week in Missouri and urge all Missourians to recognize school boards as they strive with their communities to improve our public schools through quality leadership. In testimony whereof, I have herein too set my hand and cause to be affixed the great seal of the State of Missouri in the city of Jefferson on 18th day of January, 2022. Now, in front of each of the board members, you'll see a little baggie, if you will. Students across the district have taken the time to write thanking notes to the Board of Education in appreciation of the work and care they put into our schools. We have also prepared a short video in celebration of School Board Recognition Week. Let's watch.
To the Rockwood Board of Education, I'd like to thank you.
Thanks, Rockwood Board of Education.
Thanks, Rockwood Board of Education.
I'd like to personally thank the Rockwood Board of Education.
The Rockwood School District is fortunate to have seven wonderful Board of Education members elected by the constituents of the Rockwood School District to lead and govern our district on a day-to-day basis. We would like to show our appreciation for all of their volunteer work. They do great work for all of the students and staff in the Rockwood School District. Thank you, Board of Education members.
Thank you, Rockwood Board of Education, for helping all of us out this school year.
Thanks, Rockwood Board of Education.
Thanks, Rockwood Board of Education.
Thank you, Rockwood Board of Education.
Thanks, Rockwood Board of Education.
Again, thank you, board members, for all you do for the students and staff members, families, and the entire Rockwood community. I know it goes without saying that it's a tough job, and everybody gets a raise. They get no pay.
It's a terrible joke.
Exactly. So thank you very much.
Thank you. That was an awesome video, and this is always one of my favorite things. And I know we all enjoy passing these around and giggling at the notes that kids write to us, which is awesome. So thank you to everybody who contributed to that. So the motion is to approve that the Board of Education proclaim the week of March 6 through 12, 2022, as Rockwood School Board Recognition Week. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, that passes. And now we will just take a couple minutes to transition to our awards portion of the evening. So thank you for your patience. I think we're good? Okay. All right, I think the curtain has closed, so we are ready to move on. Good evening. I'm Jamie Bays, President of the Rockwood Board of Education. We are pleased to be welcoming you tonight to the Board of Education Awards Ceremony. It is nice to have so many of you here to celebrate our students, teachers, and staff's outstanding contributions and accomplishments. This evening is a celebration. The Rockwood Board of Education recognizes individuals with four different awards. Two of them are presented to recipients at their schools or departments. The Superintendent's Certificate recognizes those who have contributed to the success of education in Rockwood. The Community Service Certificate goes to those who support the district and its communities through service projects intended to benefit a worthy cause. The other two awards are presented at Board of Education Awards ceremonies. The Above and Beyond Award recognizes individuals or organizations that have shown outstanding contributions through service or volunteerism by supporting projects or programs that impact Rockwood or its surrounding communities. The Board of Education Award recognizes people or organizations that have achieved the highest standards of excellence that embody the Rockwood spirit. Our school board members travel to our high schools as part of our board awards ceremonies. On behalf of the school board, I want to thank Lafayette High School once again for hosting us this evening. And now it is my pleasure to introduce Rockwood Interim Superintendent, Dr. Tim Ricker.
Thank you, Mrs. Bays. Good evening, everyone. We're glad you're here. It's great to be face-to-face. It's great to be here to celebrate a lot of the things that are great about our school district, but more importantly, what's great about our students. I would like to reintroduce our Board of Education that we just honored. And with us this evening, we have, of course, Jamie Bays, Lynn Midyet, our Vice President. Would you stand, Lynn? Here we go. Tom Dunn, Director. Dr. Keith Kinder, he's always wandering. There he is, right here. Randy Miller, right here. And unable to be with us this evening, Laura Lee Mondal and Tamara Jo Romberg. Before we go into the first part of the awards tonight, I'd like to welcome a new addition to the administrative team. Earlier tonight, the board approved Kyle Devine as the new Assistant Principal at Marquette High School effective July 1. Currently, Kyle teaches biology at Marquette, a position he's held since 2013. He also coaches a number of sports. Previously, he taught and coached four years at Oakville High School in the Melville District. He's served on multiple committees, including safety, academic lab committees, Behavior Response Task Force. He earned a Bachelor of Science of Education degree in Biology and Unified Science from the University of Missouri-Columbia and a Master's of Education Activities and Athletic Administration, as well as a Master's of Educational Administration from Southwest Baptist. Please give Kyle a round of applause. He's not with us tonight, but I'm sure he's looking on the livestream. So for your convenience this evening, our communications team will be taking photos of the awards and the recipients. They'll all be available for download on the Rockwood website at rsdmo.org. And if you have any questions about that, Mary La Pack and her team, David, will help you get those pictures. At the conclusion of this evening's ceremony, we'd like to invite you and the honored recipients and their parents for a reception outside the theater. So at this time, we need to get on with the awards. So let's ask Randy Miller and Tom Dunn to come forward to assist with the presentations. And hopefully during this awards ceremony, I won't knock all those down like I did the one in the fall, so. Now, we'll want to welcome Mary Cleecamp to the stage. There she is, right here. Stage left, I guess.
Thank you, Dr. Ricker, and good evening. I am Mary Cleecamp from Fort Gaggy Elementary. And here with me is Mrs. Lee Schaper-Ketterer. She is our music teacher. So we are very excited at Gaggy. This year, we had seven of our students who were selected for the 2022 All-State Children's Choir. And here with us tonight, we have Lily Ben. And Diana Kirby. Congratulations to both of you. At this time, we'd like to introduce Dr. Carlos Yaz-Grandis, Principal at Pond Elementary.
Thank you for the introduction, Dr. Cleecamp. At this time, I am pleased to invite Evy Lovir to the stage. Evy was also selected for the 2022 All-State Children's Choir. Congratulations, Evy. Let's give her another round of applause. And now I'd like to introduce Jessica Sumner.
Thank you, Carlos. Good evening. My name is Jessica Sumner, and I'm an Assistant Principal at Crestview Middle School. Unfortunately, due to scheduling conflicts, Dr. Jansen is unable to be with us this evening. But at this time, I am happy to invite Amal Bonzel to the stage. Amal won first place at the National Science Fair organized by the American Statistical Association. And now it is my pleasure to welcome Dr. Corey Sink to the stage.
Thank you, Jessica. I'm excited to be here tonight. We have some very deserving students to recognize. I'll begin with Ethan Penichek. Ethan was named the All-State Band. Ethan plays the tuba, and we're very proud of him. Okay, Ethan couldn't join us tonight. I apologize. I see you, Miles. You're getting over there early. Next, I'll present the Glory of Missouri winners. Each high school selects seniors that best exemplify each of the 14 virtues that represent the Chamber of the House of Representatives in the state capitol. These virtues are charity, education, enterprise, quality, fraternity, honor, justice, knowledge, law, liberty, progress, temperance, truth, and virtue. Tonight, Eureka High School, Lafayette High School, and Marquette High School will honor those winners. Rockwood Summit High School will honor their winners in the May Ceremony. I'm proud to recognize Eureka's winners. They are: Miles Alred, Knowledge. Harper Wood, Liberty. Eugene Renner, Quality. Elena Walker, Law. Andrew Bergfield, Justice. Jordan Jackson, Fraternity. Michaela Gregory, Education. Kiefer Beckman, Progress. Cora Skaggs, Honor. Grace Walton, Truth. Kylie Smith, Virtue. Terrell Burse, Temperance. Amelia Reeve, Enterprise. And Mason Mayer, Charity. Finally tonight, I'd like to call Hayden Schessel to the stage. Hayden is a two-time state champion after winning the 50-yard freestyle at the Misha State Swimming Championships. Hayden also placed second in the 100-yard freestyle. Well done, Hayden. With that, I'd like to call Dr. Karen Calcaterra to the stage.
Thank you, Dr. Sink. Good evening. My name is Karen Calcaterra. I'm the principal at Lafayette High School, and it is my pleasure to be here this evening. I will begin with All-State Band, Lexi Balog and Devon Ellison. Each earned All-State status this year. Congratulations to you both. I will continue with our Glory of Missouri winners. First, we have Michaela Archambault, Liberty. Merrick Zhang, Knowledge. Paige Halter, Virtue. Ross Miller, Fraternity. Arjun Suresh, Education. Lena Niblet, Charity. Jade Alvarez, Equality. Anusha Singh, Progress. Darren Huang, Justice. And Ansley Hales, Law. Continuing on, I would like to invite Tommy Hagan to the stage. Tommy was named a First Team MFCA Class V Football All-State Defensive Lineman. Quite impressive, Tommy. Next up, we have Owen Butler, who was named a Second Team MFCA Class V Football All-State Tight End. Great work, Owen. Now, I'd like to call Alyssa Nelson and Maya Witherspoon to the stage. They have been named Missouri Girls Volleyball First Team All-State. Well done, ladies. Next, it is a pleasure to call Kayden Carr to the stage. Kayden was named Missouri Boys Soccer First Team All-State, All-Region Offensive Player of the Year, Third Team All-Metro, and was recognized as part of the United Soccer Coaches All-Midwest Team. This award is given to the top 18 players in the state, and he is only the second player in the history of Lafayette to receive this honor. Way to go, Kayden. Moving along, I would like to introduce Faith Cole. Faith won the state championship at the Misha Class I State Girls Wrestling Tournament and is now a four-time undefeated Girl State Champion in the history of Missouri. Great job, Faith. Next, I have Hannah Henderson. Hannah earned Third Place All-State at the Misha Class I Girls Wrestling State Championship. Congratulations, Hannah. Next, I invite Tommy Hagan back to the stage. Tommy was the undefeated state wrestling champion in his weight class. He finished the season with an impressive 46-0 record at the Misha Class IV State Championships. Well done, Tommy. And finally tonight, please welcome Maggie Arseneau. Maggie earned Third Place All-State at the Misha Class II State Diving Championship. Congratulations, Maggie. And with that, I will pass the microphone to Dr. Tracy Whackerly, Associate Principal at Marquette High School.
Good evening. I am Tracy Whackerly, the Associate Principal at Marquette High School. It is my pleasure to be here tonight to honor these wonderful students. We will begin with a truly extraordinary accomplishment. Edward Yu received a perfect score on his ACT. Congratulations on this amazing accomplishment. Moving on, I would like to invite Alice Liu and Tina Wang to the stage. These talented musicians were named All-State Band this year. Congratulations to you both. Next, we have Jackson Kenny and Sam Stremlow. These two were named All-State for Jazz Band. Congratulations. We would also like to recognize our All-State Orchestra students. Please welcome Jonathan Liu and Lawrence Liu. I will now move on with our Glory of Missouri winners. They are Megan Murphy for Charity. Carson Hannis for Enterprise. Shay McAtier for Equality. Jack Barry for Fraternity. Camden Matthews for Honor. Lawrence Liu for Knowledge. Lawrence Liu for Knowledge. William Bratton for Progress. Jamie Bunderson for Temperance. Gillian Cole for Truth. And Mary Kate Misner for Virtue. Congratulations to these 14 students on a well-deserved honor. At this time, I would like to introduce you to Peyton Cusick. Peyton was named All-State for Girls Golf. Congratulations, Peyton. Now we have Mackenzie Guesler, who received Second Team All-State by the Missouri Fast Pitch Coaches Association. Congratulations, Mackenzie. Finally, I'd like to recognize the Astral Orbit Rocketry Team. This team, led by their advisor, Mariah Kirby, was one of 57 teams nationally to win the NASA TechRise Student Challenge. They will design and build an experiment to be loaded onto a rocket and launched into space next spring. What an amazing accomplishment. Well done. With that, I will hand the microphone over to Dr. Emily McCowen.
Thank you, Dr. Whackerly. My name is Emily McCowen, and I am the proud principal at Rockwood Summit High School. I'm excited to be here tonight to recognize our wonderful students. As was stated earlier, we will recognize our Glory of Missouri awards at the May Ceremony. We look forward to announcing those winners later this spring. Tonight, though, I would like to begin by honoring Ashton Cotton. Ashton was named All-State for Band. Congratulations. Finally, I'd like to recognize Gee Schmedeky. Gee was named All-State for Orchestra. Great job, Gee. Now it is my pleasure to welcome our Executive Director of Communications, Mary La Pack, to the stage.
Thank you, Dr. McCowen. It's a pleasure to be here to honor some of our really outstanding students and staff. I'll begin with our teachers, who have earned their National Board Certification. They are Lisa Artino, Peter Boyer, and Jamie Will. Well done. Our students are lucky to have such dedicated teachers. Moving on, the following schools were ranked in the top 2% of all public schools in the state by U.S. News &amp; World Report. They are Chesterfield Elementary, Crestview Middle, Rockwood Valley Middle, and Wildwood Middle. Congratulations. And finally, this evening, we will honor a very special student with the Above and Beyond Award. I would like to invite Austin Alltough to the stage. During a walk with his friends, Austin noticed some girls sitting on a frozen pond. When one of them fell through the ice, he was able to pull the girl out of the pond and walk her to safety. Thank you for exemplifying some of the best aspects of the Rockwood School District students. And this concludes our ceremony for this evening. Congratulations to all our students and staff, and thank you for being here. Thank you also to Jackie Delling and the communications team for organizing tonight's event. And we now invite you to join our honored recipients outside the theater for refreshments. Have a great evening, everyone.
Thank you, Mary. And with that, we adjourn the meeting.